Good morning and welcome to Los Angeles City Council. Today is Wednesday, February 15th, 2006. We are here in City Council chambers. John Ferraro, Chambers of City Hall on the third floor, 200 North Spring Street. We have open meetings every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday, and we invite members of the public down here to join us for public comment and for matters of interest. We are being broadcast on Channel 35, and we are also rebroadcast in the evenings on Channel 35 and webcast through our city's homepage at lacity.org, where there's a wealth of great information about the city, about your representatives, and about the city council. We also are available through council phone, which is a way you can call in and listen to city council meetings and the meetings of the committees of the city council as well, and we invite folks to join us through that as well. We currently have seven members. I want to thank council members Gruel, Parks, Rosendahl, Weiss, Wesson, and Zine for joining us. We have, I think, one committee that is still underway upstairs, where Mr. Padilla, Mr. Labange, and Ms. Perry are finishing up the Energy and Environment Committee. We'd like to ask Mr. Cardenas, Ms. Hahn, Mr. Weezer, Mr. Reyes, and Mr. Smith, I believe, is up there as well, to join us, and as soon as we have three more members, we will begin as soon as we have a quorum. Thank you very much. All right, Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Cardenas, Gruel, Hahn, Weezer, Labange, Padilla, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Rosendahl, Smith, Weiss, Wesson, Zine, Garcetti, ten members present, and a quorum. Mr. President?
Okay, first order of business?
Approval of the minutes.
All right, Mr. Zine moves, Mr. Smith seconds. If there's no objection, that's unanimous vote, so ordered.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Okay, Mr. Rosendahl moves, and Ms. Hahn seconds. If there's no objection, unanimous vote, so ordered.
Mr. President, now would be time for comments from the public on items not on council's agenda.
Okay, now it's time for public comment, which, on items before our jurisdiction but that are not agendized today. I'd like to ask Bob Quinno to come forward, be followed by, we have a number of cards here. If I can ask folks... I need to read the, excuse me, excuse me. If we could please have order in the chambers, I need to read the other names of the folks that are going to speak. I need to read the other names, if we can please have order in chambers. Nader Tashakor, Maria Gonzalez, and Roberto Macias will be the next speakers. Mr. Quinno, welcome.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, council members. I stand before a group of your employees that I represent. Like you, they have families that they support. They have children, and wives, and parents that they put roofs over, that they put clothes on, that they put food in. But unlike you, and unlike some of the other city employees, the dollars in their pockets are eroding every year because we can't get a fair cost of living increase to keep pace with inflation. I would be amazed at this late date if this body didn't already understand that your CAO has lost all ability to be objective on issues relating to EAA. Knowing that, you must also know that in your name, there are a constant stream of employee ordinance violations that are occurring to the tune that we have a backlog right now of unfairs at the ERB. Because they are continuing to occur, we're getting word back from departments that they're being told by the CAO's office not to settle grievances even when the department knows it's in violation of the Employee Relations Ordinance or the MOUs. This has only served to deepen the resolve of these people. They are not going to go away this time, that's why we're before you here today. What you don't see is that there are several hundred other of these members, your employees, that are in the halls, filling the rotunda here. EAA will not walk away from this project. On the near horizon are events which will be national events. We are hoping that it's not necessary for us to have you experience some of the pain that's been handed to us in your name by the CAO and by his representatives. But the fact of the matter is, this situation will only be solved when you take it into your own hands, and when you finally give us our due, which is equal pay for equal work.
We can please have order in the chambers? Can we please have order in the chambers? Can we please have order in the chambers? Thank you.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak to you today.
We appreciate it. Your presence and your comments. Nader Tashakor? I am aware that there are a number of folks who have filled out speaker cards who can't get into chambers right now, so I'm asking if there might be a few people that might be able to leave the chambers to make sure, because of fire codes, that some of the other citizens who have come here today to give public testimony can come forward. So if we can ask maybe a dozen people to please leave the chambers, we will be aware of your strength and the strength of the folks that are outdoors, but if we can please have that happen, we can't proceed with public comment until we have that. There's a democratic right of folks to come here and address the council. I will ask our guards to please ask if we can please escort about a dozen people out, because there are folks that are waiting outside who filled out speaker cards. I respect that right, and everybody who wants to stay here can stay here. I'm just asking for a dozen of you to please leave so that other speakers may come forward. Mr. Cardenas?
Mr. President, it appears that about ten people did leave the chambers.
Okay, can we please, can our sergeant-at-arms let folks know that are outside in the hallway who have filled out public speaker cards, who may be EAA members as well, that they may now enter to, if they're there specifically for public comment, this would be the time they may now enter chambers. Is Nader Tashakor here? We'll hold that in case outside. Maria Gonzalez? From South Central Farmers, Maria Gonzalez. Roberto Macias. Jose Fina Medina. Maria Avina. Guadalupe Felix. Candido Santana. Elisa Lopez. Federico Vargas. Elisa Avina. Aurelio Gonzalez. Yes, sir. Mr. Cardenas?
Mr. President, I'd like to make a suggestion. If those people are unable to get to the podium, maybe what we can do is postpone public comment the rest, the remainder, until later on in the meeting?
Sure, we can absolutely do that. Alberto Juarez from EAA also filled out a card. Is Alberto here? Again, he may be somebody caught outside, so we will hold public comment right now. Let's suspend public comment and continue with business. At hand, Mr. Clerk.
On the regular agenda, items one and two are street lighting district items, notice for public hearing. Council should continue the hearings and ordinances to March 3rd.
Okay, anybody wishing to be heard on that? If not, let's continue those to March 3rd without objection, unanimous vote, so ordered. Okay, next item?
Items three through five are also items noted for public hearing. If there are no protests, council should close the hearings and instruct the city engineer to proceed with the vacations.
Okay. Any protests to those? Seeing none, anybody wishing to be heard on them? If not, please open the roll on the proceeding, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Twelve eyes.
Okay, those will, that instruction for the city engineer to proceed will go forward. Next items?
Items six through 27 are items for which public hearings have been held. Item six is confirmation of a city official. Do you wish to hold that on the desk?
Let's hold that on the desk. Call that special, please.
That would leave before council items seven through 27, and on items 25, 26, and 27, there are two reports on the file. A motion is required.
Okay, Mr. Weezer?
Mr. President, I'd like to request that we continue item number 11 till the 24th of this month.
Okay. Any objection, colleagues? If not, let's continue that, the 20, till the 24th?
Was that February 24th or March 24th?
Of this month, February 24th.
Of this month, yes.
Okay, that'll be continued. Mr. Parks?
On item 27, adopt the budget and finance report.
Okay, on item 27, Mr. Parks moves the budget and finance report. Any other specials, colleagues? Seeing none, please take-
Mr. President, we do need motions on 25 and 26.
Those also have conflicting reports. Mr. Reyes, on 25 and 26, there's a plum report, there's a personnel report as well, Mr. Zine, and budget and finance report on one of those, Mr. Parks. I don't know if any, anybody would prefer to move one over the others. Are they mutually exclusive, Mr. Clerk? The plum ones, okay, Mr. Reyes, would you like to move the plum reports on those? Okay. We'll move the plum reports on both of those. Any other specials? Seeing none, if we can please take up the balance of the items, prepare the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Twelve eyes.
Those are approved. Thank you. Next items? Next item, Mr. Clerk?
Items 28 through 50 are items which public hearings have not been held. Ten votes are required for consideration.
We will, there are no cards on those. We will open and close the public comments. Any specials, colleagues? We have items 28 to 50. Mr. Parks?
On number 38?
38.
We made a previous amending motion to request the CLA and CAO evaluate the outcome of this audit upon its completion.
Okay, so you'd like to add that as an amendment?
It was already circulated at a prior meeting.
Okay, we'll add that. If there's no objection, that'll be accepted as a friendly amendment. Any other specials, colleagues? Seeing none, please prepare the roll on the balance and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen eyes.
Those are approved. Next items, please.
Item 51 is a closed session item. Do you wish to-
Fourth with, Mr. Parks?
Number 10, fourth with.
Number 10, if we can do fourth with. I'm sorry, Mr. Clerk, if you'd like to continue. If you can ask the sergeant-at-arms, please, to keep order here while we're proceeding with this city's business. Next items, Mr. Clerk.
Mr. President, that would leave item 51, which is a closed session item. Do you wish to hold that on the desk?
Yes, let's hold that on the desk. And is that the-
That would take you back now to item six, which is the confirmation of Mr. Edward Bokes as the permanent general manager of the Department of Animal Services.
Yes, let's take Mr. Bokes up at this time. Mr. Bokes, we will have quiet and order in just one minute. Could I please ask the folks that are in chambers still to allow us to continue with the business? The longer that we are delayed doing that is, thank you very much, we appreciate it. We hear you very loud and clear, and we appreciate you exercising your democratic right, but please, if we can ask you to now... Hold on one second, Mr. Bokes. Can we ask the sergeant-at-arms, please, for those folks that are still in chambers Welcome, Mr. Bokes. Welcome to Los Angeles.
Thank you, Colonel.
I know you've been here for a while. Want to give Mr. Bokes the opportunity to address the council first on any thoughts you may have on your interest in this position, and then we'll see if council members have some questions to be asked as well of you based on our Public Safety Committee hearings. So, with that, please.
Thank you, Chairman Garcetti. Thank you, members of the board, of the council. I first want to thank the mayor's office and the city council, and everybody that I've met in city government for the very, very warm welcome to Los Angeles. And I'm very encouraged by the level of support and commitment to the mission and vision of Animal Services. And I have much to say on that, and I suspect it may come out in some of the questions, but I just want to thank you for the opportunity to manage this very important quality-of-life program, Animal Services, and I will do the best to my ability, and thank you for this opportunity to consider my confirmation.
Thank you very much, Mr. Bokes. Mr. Cardenas is our first speaker.
Thank you, President Garcetti. Welcome to Los Angeles. You've been here a little while now. It's good to see you on Sunday night, as we were at a fundraiser for animals, and did you get both of those two dogs adopted, or just one?
We did, indeed, yes.
Oh, wonderful.
It's a very successful event.
Wonderful, thank you. This is a very important part of the city, but at the same time, it's become more and more controversial, more and more heated. There are some constituents that feel as though a no-kill policy needs to be implemented yesterday. How do you feel about the city moving in that direction, and what kind of progress do you think we could make as a city, based on what you know so far? My time, please.
Thank you. Congressman Cardenas, first of all, I want to thank you publicly for your support of the Anti-Crality Task Force, and that is going to be an extraordinary program for Los Angeles, something we can all be very proud of. With respect to no-kill, certainly in a community as large as Los Angeles, it's important that we all understand what no-kill is, and how will we know when we have achieved it? And we are working on a definition of no-kill, and I think we have something that the entire community is embracing. And I see it as eminently achievable, possibly within five years, and we are developing a five-year strategic plan to achieve it. We're very, very sensitive to the concerns of many in the community that had happened yesterday, and certainly that's where I think all of our heart is, is that, if only we could. And certainly, we can advance and accelerate the progress to the extent that the community is willing to help. And I think one of the biggest challenges Animal Services has had historically is getting our story out to the community in a way that would well advise them how they could better help and assist. So part of the budget that we were putting together, and some of the assessment reorganization of the department that we're looking at, is, it will include a public programs director, and a marketing director, and people that will help us get that message out. And we're going to be reporting on a regular basis. Already, in just the first month, January of '06 compared to January of '05, we've seen a 25% decline in euthanasia. So this suggests that there is tremendous room for improvement, and as we continue to improve and implement programs designed towards no-kill objective, and seeing no-kill initially as a direction. Nobody is claiming that Animal Services has achieved no-kill, but as a management team and the frontline staff, we are embracing it as a direction, and as we move in that direction, I believe we'll see it's more and more an achievable goal.
Good, thank you. Are you aware of the last general manager of this department, some of the threats on his life, and some of the activity that actually threatened him physically and otherwise in this city? Are you aware of, I'm not asking you to give details, but you're aware that that environment was provided for that person by certain members of the community?
I am aware of that, and I'm also aware that it's somewhat endemic in our industry. Animal Services or animal control departments are oftentimes departments that communities love to hate, for a variety of reasons, but there are reasons, I believe, that can be turned around. I've experienced the same kind of animosity in other communities myself, but as we demonstrate that we can be responsive, and we can demonstrate results, which is the most important thing, the proof is obviously in the pudding, then the community tends to want to help, and that's what I'm hoping in Los Angeles. What I am finding is tremendous across the board in the groups, there are very, very, very small pockets that are very vocal, who are having, are being challenged by the changes and the progress that we're trying to make. But by and large, I feel that the animal welfare, even, and including the animal rights contingency, is very, very optimistic about the direction we're moving in.
Good, I'm glad to hear that. One of the things I'd like to let you know, and my advice is that, should anything occur, please, please don't try to be a tough guy and take it lightly. Please document it, please let the proper authorities know. We would hate for anyone, any employee of this city, to allow themselves to tough it out and not be protected properly and appropriately. We wouldn't want that for you or for anyone else. So please, know that we do care, and we are here to work with you, and make sure that you're not put under any undue stress, or unnecessary threats, or what have you, that you would have to endure alone. We're here with you. Unfortunately, that may occur, as you pointed out. This is not an isolated incident in this city. It happens in other parts of the country on this issue. In addition to that, I have a motion that's going through the process here, looking at formalizing our responsibilities as a council and via the mayor's office, as elected officials, and making sure that our general managers and departments actually have a plan written out so that we understand what the goals and objectives are, so that when evaluations do come about, which our charters do require, that evaluations be done, but our charter does not require that we actually put forth some kind of plan or some blueprint on the front end. Do you welcome that kind of system?
Absolutely, and I'm familiar with it. I've done this in other communities, and have already begun work on that here in Los Angeles with my management team. And overall, we have already, just in the first five to six weeks, developed mission, vision, value statements, which, if, with the council's permission, I could read into the record. But we have two specific goals under our mission. One is developing a reverence-for-life animal management program, and within that goal, we are developing a variety of programs, chief of which is the Anti-Crality Task Force, various adoption programs, our New Hope Program, which is going to be partnering with 150 animal welfare and rescue organizations in the LA area, by providing extended services to them, actually having our shelters accessible to them 24/7, so that they can come in, unencumbered by the public who are there to adopt animals, to come in and be able to take animals off our euthanasia list, and that we'll have actual staff devoted to helping them do that and work with that. We also have a program to address specifically the euthanasia rate. It's called our Plus One Minus One Program, already implemented. It was a little slow getting started because it was a new concept, but as I said, it resulted in a 25% decrease in euthanasia in just the first month. So I don't want to be overly optimistic, but certainly that's a great way to start. The second goal is developing a community response, customer service culture within the community. One of the biggest, I cannot tell you how many times, just in the six weeks I've been here, in returning phone calls, that people just about fall off their chair saying, "I can't believe you returned my phone call." So we're developing a culture of trying to respond to people within 24 hours to let them know that at least we've received their concern. Either we've addressed it within that 24 hours, or given them some sort of a status on what's being happened if a more thorough investigation needs to occur, or whatever. Also, under the goal of community responsiveness and customer service, we're developing a public programs department that will deal with community programs, such as the Teach Love and Compassion Program that Councilmember Reyes has expressed some support for, and I'm hoping others, and I think Councilmember Parks has also expressed some support for a program that works with at-risk kids in our community and providing some literacy components, but really developing a culture within our centers, our animal centers, of making them community centers, where the elderly will come in and mentor kids, the kids will come in and learn the value of love and compassion as it relates to not just animals, but each other and others in our community. So there's, we have a very strategic plan with a lot of initiatives, and I think it's just going to transform Animal Services in Los Angeles and truly make it a national model.
So in order to be a no-kill city, are we going to just build 50,000 more kennel units, or are we going to have to spay and neuter at a rate that may be tenfold or more of what we're doing today?
Exactly. You hit the target right on the head. We will never adopt our way out of this problem. Even though we are looking to increase adoptions dramatically to accommodate the animals that are already on the ground, if you will, we must be much more strategic in ensuring that we turn the faucet off, that there aren't animals, unwanted animals, being born into our community. So I have to hand it to the city of Los Angeles, who, which already, for their very aggressive spay-neuter program and voucher system, what I have encountered in the community is there's a lot of confusion as to how people can access that. So we have pulled all of our spay-neuter voucher programs under one umbrella, and it's called our Big Fix Program, the Big Fix, which it truly is. This is the ultimate solution to a lot of our animal welfare woes, is just reducing the numbers of animals in our shelters, unwanted animals coming into our shelters, and as we do that, I suspect, and that we will see a reduction in the cost of animal services over time, because we will have turned the faucet off.
Thank you. One of the things that I'd like to point out to the people of Los Angeles, spaying neutering is critical to having a no-kill city, and also having a healthy city when it comes to the number of animals we have. There are numbers out there from studies that show that a pair of cats or a pair of dogs can actually lead to 25,000 offspring down the line. So spaying and neutering on the front end is definitely critical, and it's something that's very important. Thank you for mentioning the Animal Cruelty Task Force. Your department has been very cooperative. I assume that under your leadership, they'll be, continue to be cooperative with the police department and all the other eight entities that are there to make sure that we do a good job. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Cardenas. Mr. Rosendahl, to be followed by Ms. Hahn, Mr. Padilla, Mr. Zine, Ms. Gruel, and Mr. Reyes. Mr. Rosendahl.
Good morning.
Good morning, Councilmember.
I'm sure you saw the whole story at the exit of your predecessor from here. Do you have a deal with the city? If things don't work out, that you can transition out? What kind of a personnel relationship did you establish coming in?
Just to historically give you some idea of how it is that I first- Just to historically give you some idea of how it is that I first approached the city of Los Angeles, while in New York, while in New York, I became aware of some of the difficulties that were occurring in Animal Services in Los Angeles. And I reached out to the mayor's office to offer my services as a consultant, pro bono. I actually had a foundation that was willing to provide these services pro bono to help turn the situation around. But as we explored that possibility or initiative, it became clearer and clearer that the situation had just become so explosive that a more dramatic change was required, not under threat, but just as a management decision. And I was offered the position and because, through that, because of the discourse and seeing the challenge in Los Angeles, I accepted it. But with respect specifically to your question, does this are some kind of a deal that if things don't work out, I serve at the pleasure? And, no, there is no deal that I'm aware of, outside whatever the city provides.
So you've come in with your eyes open to the fact you serve at the pleasure of the mayor, and there are controversial aspects of your job, and you're just clear about that and we're not going to have to worry?
Crystal clear. My only intention is to try to make a difference in this community. If I'm successful, then we're all successful, and if I'm not, then there may be somebody better equipped.
Outline how you intend to make a difference.
Beg pardon?
Outline how you intend to make--
Well, in addition to the program that, some of the programs that I just mentioned to Councilmember Cardenas, if I could, we've already established and realigned the department with respect to mission and vision and values. And I'll read that into the record because I think what it highlights is a whole new culture for our department. And the culture is now, I believe, moving into a direction that's in alignment with the vast majority of residents in Los Angeles and what they're really looking for from Animal Services. So our new mission statement is to promote and protect the health, safety, and welfare of animals and people in the city of Los Angeles. Our vision is we envision the day when all citizens, their property, and neighborhoods are safe from the dangers and nuisances of irresponsible pet guardianship, and animals will not suffer because of abuse, neglect, or ignorance. And every pet born is assured a good home and care all its natural life. In our value statements, and these are the rules by which we as an organization will work and play together amongst ourselves as well as with our partners in the community, our value statement states, "We value the integrity of each employee, volunteer, and partner contributing to the professional delivery of excellent customer service and the humane treatment of animals in an atmosphere of open, honest communication predicated on our trust in and respect for each other." And we've also developed a service theme, how we're hoping that the community will relate to us as a service organization, a service provider, and that is Animal Services creates happiness by bringing pets and people together. Under the umbrella of our mission, vision, and values statements, we're developing a two-pronged strategic plan, as I mentioned, one dealing with animal management, how we're going to deal with the animals on the ground. And it's going to be guided by a reverence-for-life approach, highlighting, as Councilmember Cardenas so eloquently put it, the importance of spay-neuter in really getting ahead of the curve, the rising costs of animal control. We can see a reduction in animal controls costs over time by being aggressive in our spay-neuter approaches. So really consolidating and expanding our Big Fix Program and our Big Fix Partners with great organizations in the community like the Sam Simon Foundation, the Amanda Foundation, and others. We think we can really look at, and we're already looking at developing a program that focuses on areas, we have a very sophisticated database program where we can highlight those areas where the most animals are coming in. And we can address that by focusing our spay-neuter resources to actually go into those communities and provide that service on the ground to folks who couldn't afford it any other way. And that's something that we're very much looking forward to. Other programs, the Teach Love and Compassion Program, will help us expand the image or improve and enhance the image of Animal Services from that of a dog pound and dog catching to community services and a community program. And I have to compliment the city council and the mayor's office and the CAO's office for their foresight in the design and building of these state-of-the-art facilities that will begin to open up this June. Our first one's opening in June, which will be the pride not only of Los Angeles, but they will be a point of pride across the country. They will be a new standard in caring for animals within our shelters. And Councilmembers Cardenas' point is well taken. We can't build enough shelters to handle this problem. So within each of our shelters, we will have operational spay-neuter clinics that provide spay-neuter services not only for our animals before they go out, but also for the members of our community who are in any form of public assistance and can't afford to take their animals to a vet. They will be able to provide that service either at cost or pro bono.
That's all music to my ears, and I'm very happy to hear what you're saying. I'd like a baseline from you. How many cats and dogs are we killing right now a year?
You know, I had pulled that chart up just yesterday. Did you bring it with you, the chart, the plus-one minus-one chart? If I can get back to you with that specific number, and forgive me for not knowing that I had that--
That's okay, but what will be most important for me is you report to us periodically how that number is going down by the activities you just described to do that.
Perfect. That report will be on our website monthly. And it, we will be reporting our monthly numbers on our Plus-One, which is our adoption program, our New Hope Program, our Minus-One, which is our reducing euthanasia program. All of our statistics for dogs, cats, rabbits, and other species will be readily available on our website.
When you get it on your website, I think it'll be very important for you to communicate to the neighborhood councils throughout the city, the specifics about those areas where there is an out-of-control situation, where you can go in and do the spading and neutering for free, and we can encourage the neighborhood councils to talk to their neighbors about the strategy.
As you're probably well aware, the neighborhood councils have each selected an animal director, animal welfare director, and I am meeting with all of them, I think, within the next week or two. So we will be discussing strategic ways of how we can address the neighborhoods most in need.
Just a side suggestion, the community groups who love animals, I happen to have two cats and two dogs, Lulu and Rosie are my dogs, and Black Lady and Rocky are my cats, that you just bring a group of citizens around you and let them into your advice world so that the community feels a relationship.
Right. If I could speak to that, we are already in the works of working with that. I'm working with Scott Sorrentino and his no-kill council. We're looking to expand that group of individuals to include others. It is my philosophy and my approach is to be all-inclusive so that every voice can be heard. I'm convinced that this problem can be solved, but no one or two or three groups have all the solutions. I see it as a jigsaw puzzle, and we all bring a piece to the puzzle. And if any one piece is missing, we'll never achieve the goal. So we have to be inclusive, we have to pull everybody to the table, and we have to address all of these issues together.
Welcome aboard. We look forward to working with you in the years ahead. Congratulations for coming to our city.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Our third speaker is Ms. Hahn, to be followed by Mr. Padilla, Mr. Zine, Ms. Gruel, Mr. Reyes, and Mr. Cardenas for a second time.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Bokes, we do welcome you to Los Angeles, not the easiest place to take over the general manager of this department. I had a constituent in San Pedro who, late last night, dropped off a fairly large package of homework for me to look at and specifically wanted me to ask you a few questions that were of concern to her. And while we certainly believe in being inclusive and bringing as many people to the table as possible to help solve these solutions, there are a number of people in Los Angeles who are very concerned about the rescue community. Some of the groups, Animal Liberation Front, Animal Defense League, PETA, IDA, DAW, the Defense of Animals, people like Jerry Blasek, very concerned that these are, Animal Defense League has been identified, Animal Liberation Front has been certified by the FBI as being a terrorist group. Jerry Blasek has been quoted as saying he endorses the political assassination as a means to advocate his views. Clearly, some of the methods of these groups have made a lot of us uncomfortable, feel that that is not the way to solve problems and liberation. My own brother had several of his Saturdays, shall we say, disrupted by these terrorist groups, put fear into my niece and nephew several times. So this constituent is concerned about your relationship with these groups. So I will ask you, what is your relationship with these organizations? Have you met with them? Have they hosted receptions for you? There is one claim that one of them has been allowed by you to rewrite the city's website for Animal Services. That's what they're claiming, Mary Cummings. So can you answer some of those questions? Hold my time.
Absolutely, absolutely. And if I could just back up again, again, to the overarching statements of the department and why I feel they're so important, and specifically with respect to our value statement, and that is, "We value the integrity of each employee, volunteer, and partner contributing to the professional delivery of excellent customer service and the humane treatment of animals in an atmosphere of open, honest communication predicated on our trust in and respect for each other." And that's a standard by which we expect those in the community to relate to and respond to us. And those who can't relate to us within the scope of these values, that is constructively and proactively assisting and helping, marginalize themselves and really add no value to the process or to what we're trying to do. I have no affiliation with the ADL, ALF, even PETA, any of these groups. My career has always been animal control. Because of my philosophy of no-kill and implementing programs that help animal controls move in a direction of no-kill, that has somewhat endeared me to some of the groups, some of the animal rights groups. And I do have friends who are animal rights activists, but none that I'm aware of that are in the ADL, ALF, or the organizations that have been so problematic in Los Angeles. With respect to Mary Cummings, I have absolutely no knowledge that she is a member of either of those groups. She has been a longstanding volunteer of Animal Services and has been offering for four or five years to help the department develop its website. And if anybody who's visited our website would realize that it's in desperate need of help. So I absolutely asked her if she could help, and from what I have seen, she's done an extraordinary job in helping us improve and enhance that image. And I have had absolutely no issues or concerns with respect to her commitment to the direction we're moving in. And if there's any evidence to the contrary, I'd be very interested in that.
And is it true that DAW will be hosting a reception for you on February 19?
And you have to forgive me, who is DAW?
DAW is the Directors of Animal Welfare, another group--
Yes, well, another group that what?
That is considered part of this rescue community that this constituent of mine has concerns about.
Director of Animal Welfare?
Mm-hmm.
You have to forgive me, is that not, is that not the group of animal directors from all the community centers, all the community groups?
I'm not familiar with this group. I just know my constituent was very concerned that that group was hosting an event for you.
Yeah, DAW is the city's community, and forgive me, Jim, if somebody can correct me on this, hello, if anybody can correct me on this. It's my understanding that the DAW is the Directors of Animal Welfare appointed by all the city community groups and--
So you see no concern there?
That's my understanding, that's a grassroots, legitimate, well-respected, and accepted form of--
I'm passing on her concern. So if you feel no qualms about that, then that's fine.
Yeah, I would hardly characterize them as a terrorist group.
Okay, let me ask you, is it true that I heard that you plan to get the city to a no-kill position in five years from now?
This is why I do that, yes.
Hold my time, oh.
It's expired, Ms. Hahn, I've been holding it, sorry.
I'm happy to address it if--
Yeah.
No, you please, you can continue.
Yeah, we are looking at a five-year goal, and I think it's unrealistic to look further than that. If we achieve it within five years, great. We will certainly be doing everything we can to achieve it faster and quicker. If at the end of five years, we have not achieved it, it's time to reassess, reevaluate, and develop a plan for the next, for the next five years. But what we are wanting, what we're wanting to demonstrate is that, and what we did in New York and other communities, is month-to-month progress in that direction.
Well, I'll finish up by saying, it's a little disappointing to me, frankly, because I think Mayor Hahn had 2008 as a place he wanted to get our city to a no-kill position. And in fact, the number that you asked about, the dogs and cats that have been killed, I mean, that has been declining for a various number of reasons. So we're hoping that you can get us there quicker. I think everyone, whether, whatever group you're with, I think everyone's on the same page as we like to see Los Angeles really be a no-kill city. And again, I'm hoping that San Pedro has got a brand-new, state-of-the-art shelter being built, and I would love for you to test a no-kill policy 100 percent at that shelter, and I think that would be a good type of program, and I encourage you to do it.
We are already eyeing that community for that very purpose. And with respect to a five-year goal, I would just say that I tend to like to under-promise and over-deliver. 2008 is very acceptable to me, and you can rest assured I will be pushing our organization and our community to achieve that goal, if at all possible.
Thank you very much, Mr. Padilla.
I think I'll just keep it short and sweet today. A lot of my colleagues have asked good questions, and I too rise in support of your confirmation to this position. Just on behalf of my colleagues from the San Fernando Valley, I want to remind you that this is a big city. And statistically speaking, graphically speaking, your GIS models and your maps will tell you, you know, there's significant problems in certain concentrations in the city. South LA, I know it's a lot of attention and resources, the east side, but the San Fernando Valley is not to be underestimated, particularly the northeast areas. So I wanted to make sure that's high on your radar, offer any tours of the district that you like. We're actually rebuilding some of the facilities out there and building new facilities to accommodate, again, this growing, this growing problem. So once you've settled into the office, let's go for a ride.
I welcome that, I welcome that, and I want to assure all the council that none of your districts will be overlooked in our plan. And I've already had a chance to meet with some of you, and I welcome a chance to meet with all of you to address the very specific issues that concern you most so that we can incorporate that into our strategies.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Padilla. Mr. Zine, to be followed by Ms. Gruel, Mr. Reyes, Mr. Laban, and Mr. Cardenas.
Thank you, Mr. President. It's a good morning.
Good morning, sir.
I had an opportunity to meet you at the Public Safety, where we heard your views, your concerns. A couple of issues, I want to also, in response to Councilmember Hahn, my office has worked with Mary Cummings. We have a coyote task force, and she was a member of that task force. Everything that I've heard about her and I've seen her testify here at Public Safety, also in council, I don't think she's affiliated, at least the way she's presented information in committee and here in council, with any kind of terrorist group. And I know that there are terrorist groups. I've been a target of a terrorist group along with some of my colleagues, so I understand how that aspect goes. We have a coyote problem in certain parts of the city, and we're trying to address that in a humane fashion. We have the opposing views. Some people say, "Let the coyotes run wild and lock your babies and little animals up," and other people say, "Go out and eliminate the coyotes." We're trying to come up with a plan. We've established a community group to try and come up with a reasonable plan. Do you have any issues or any solutions or ideas? I know we want a no-kill in the city of Los Angeles, but what about the coyotes that keep on encroaching more and more into the residential areas? And I represent from Mulholland to Roscoe, all that area from Mulholland to Ventura Boulevard, Mountain District, Santa Monica Mountain Area, there's a tremendous amount of them. And the people are genuinely concerned. Can you address that, please?
I certainly can, and I think our mission statement speaks to that, you know, we promote and protect the health, safety, and welfare of animals, not just pets, but animals, which would include coyotes, and people in the city of Los Angeles. So a community response is what's needed. And as we spoke in the committee-- And as we spoke in the committee, and as you're suggesting now, had, pulling together a group of citizens, I've already identified several who are very interested in this issue as well, on both sides of, of, of the issue. And I've also talked to my staff, and I know there's a perception that there isn't a policy, and I've been assured that there is a written policy. I haven't been briefed on it yet, but I have a meeting scheduled with those members of my department that work with wildlife. We could include them in this task force, and I think we can come up with something that will address the issue with respect to human safety, as well as how the best address the coyote situation.
Okay, and I know that we have a group in my district that has been formed, so we'd more than happy to share that they've already written a, a report that we're reviewing, but we want to come up with something, and with the assistance of the animal services. Hopefully, we can satisfy those issues, those needs, concerns.
Well, I would invite a member of your, of your group to perhaps sit on this, this broader, community-wide task force, and that we could-
Thank you, thank you. And just one more, I just want to emphasize the issue, which came up, your predecessor on the issue of safety, him and his family, and Councilman Cardenas touched on this. This was an issue that came up, and I wasn't in agreement with some of the statements made, his lack of knowledge. And you are fully knowledgeable and fully aware of what he went through, and the issues of threats and intimidations, et cetera.
Yes, I am.
Okay, I hope that it doesn't happen, but the concern is that you're aware of it.
I'm aware, and I also do want to just say how much I appreciate the council's support with respect to that reality.
And also, some of the, some of the employees of animal services have also had those threats and intimidation by certain, shall we say, what the FBI refers to as terrorist groups.
And, and just, just to go on the record, that all the members of my staff who have been targeted and, and are concerned, as well as myself, are working very cooperatively with both the police department and the city council.
Okay, thank you.
I mean, the city attorney's office.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Gruehl, followed by Mr. Reyes.
Thank you, I just, you have lots of questions, I don't want to keep you long. The current facility I have in my district, which is unfortunately, or fortunately going to Mr. Cardenas's district, on Sherman Way, which, believe it or not, I had my dog, who I got there when I was four years old, the mutt, lived for almost 20 years from. So I think it's so important that we do look at how we get people to adopt and to, to look at that. But I think it's a facility that is old and dilapidated, and again, there is a need for a new one. I'm not sure if this question was kind of asked before, but, you know, we really found over the years that the staff of the department has, morale has been extremely low, based on whether it be the threats or the multiple changes of the general managers that are in that position. And obviously, we know if we have happy employees that are pleased to be there and feel they have the support of their general manager and the administration, as well as the city council here, that it's going to allow them to do their job better. And, and we'll be looking to you to, to give us some advice in council as to how we can support that, but I'm interested in your thoughts on that. And secondly, as you go through even the budget process and we go through this year, I don't think animal services has fared very well in the kind of priority we have given, and I think it's critically important, but I'd be interested kind of in how you see, you've been going, I know in visiting to all the shelters and meeting with people, and again, I'm sorry if I missed your, if someone else asked that question earlier, but-
Right, right. Could you ask the first part of the question again?
Which is how you think, and then morale, yes, morale.
Okay, great, thank you.
And hold my time.
The, the good news is that people who are typically attracted to animal control work, because it is oftentimes a thankless job, and, and I'm hoping, and I have seen so much indication with respect to the mayor's office and the city council, that there's a higher appreciation for the work that our staff does. And it really is, it is life and death, it really is very difficult, it's very emotional. And under the best of circumstances, it's, it's very difficult. And when a community, community so misunderstands the, the problems and the constraints of a department, and then attacks, it becomes all the more difficult. We are working on a number of morale-building programs. One is called, it's an employee suggestion program called Let Your Genius Out of the Bottle. So many of our employees have had extraordinary ideas about things that we can do to really make a difference in saving lives, being more responsive to the community, and they have found it very, very frustrating to see these ideas percolate to the top and be implemented. So we're looking at developing a program that not only, that, that not only receives ideas, evaluates them, and implements them, but actually rewards the employees that step up. So we want to encourage that. We really do believe that every employee has a degree of genius that they bring, they're, they're a piece of the puzzle, and we want to open the door to that. Another thing that we're doing with respect to our plus-one, minus-one program is every time, at, at the end of every month, there's usually three winners, you know, the, the shelter that has seen the most dramatic increase in adoptions, the most dramatic decrease in euthanasia, or the most dramatic increase in New Hope placements, or placements with our partner, rescue partner organizations. So we have a trophy that will be passed, three trophies that'll be passed around from shelter to shelter after every month, after we do the statistics. And we'll actually be doing sort of a pizza celebration, handing out, and really expressing to the, to the staff our appreciation as managers and as city government for their life-saving efforts. And that whole program is funded by a foundation, it's not going to cost the city a cent. With respect to the budget, I'm, I'm pleased that you brought that up, and that is, is a big concern, as we look at increasing the, the workload by some 300% in the year to come, with the opening of all of our new shelters. Certainly shelters that will be the pride of Los Angeles, if they're properly staffed and managed. And so we have put together a budget, and we've made a modification to it even just this morning, because we are very cognizant and aware of the fiscal structural concerns that the, the city of LA has. And, and I think we've been able to reduce our proposal significantly without hindering that, that, the all-important delivery of services on the front line within our shelters, which are the, the biggest focus, especially as they open up. So I'm hoping that the city council will be aware of our budget, and, and will support it and help us any way that you can, if you have insight or suggestions, on how we can modify it to be more responsive to the, to the, to the fiscal concerns as well.
And, and just two, kind of last comments, that, you know, as you go forward, for you to think about is, I had a, a pet fair in my district about three months after I was elected, and it was modeled after Mr. Padilla, and, because I went to one of his pet fairs, and I said, I want one too. And I know that we've been limited in our ability to do those pet fairs, but they are extremely popular and provide a way in which we can educate the public about whether it be adoption, whether it be spay and neutering, registering, you know, your, your dog or cat or whatever animal. And I have a portion of my district, which I want to have you come visit, which is in Sanlito Hanga, where we have chickens, and horses, and cows, and sheep, and all of that, that-
Oh, my.
Yeah, a little different in, in Los Angeles. But the, the last thing I also want to comment on is the LAPD and their relationship with animal services. A few years back, I was meeting with the senior lead officers in my North Hollywood division, and they were sharing with me some of the problems they had, which they would take a suspect into custody, and there was an animal in the home, and no one else was there. They weren't allowed to leave that animal in that home until animal services person came to pick up that animal and, and make sure, you know, it was taken care of, whether it be taken to the pound, for the owner to get out of jail, whatever the case may be. And it was sometimes taking two hours, which is two hours of police officer time, that desperately is needed for them to get back out on the street. And what we ultimately did is I funded the purchase of, and I don't know what, what they're called, but the stick with the thing on the end-
Catch ball.
Yes, to, to be able to get some of the animals into their car if they needed to do that, so they could move on. But that's not the best way. So as you look at your department, and the ability for the relationship between LAPD and animal services is critical, to, to limit the amount of time our officers have to wait for animal services, and I know that relates to budget probably, too, but-
Well, Councilwoman Gruehl, you have really touched on a, a very significant hidden cost to animal services or animal control in every community, and that is, when animal services is underbudgeted and understaffed, PD typically, and oftentimes has to step up at an extraordinarily higher cost to the city.
Yes.
So by not providing the manpower that a department needs, an animal control department needs, there will be hidden costs down the road, because PD then will have to respond, and fire department will have to respond, because we just won't have the manpower on the road.
It would be interesting to have some of the statistics, sorry, statistics that allows us to, to do that. So thank you very much, look forward to talking about it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Reyes.
Thank you, Council President. Morning, Mr. Bulks.
Mr. Card.
I first want to thank you for all of the knowledge you're imparting with us in this session, it's been rather terribly long, but I did want to echo one of the issues you raised, and based on the conversations through committee and everything else. This notion of leveraging these days is very important, especially in times when we have limited budget, budget resources. But we have in many areas of the city that are engaging in, in issues of youth, we have gang intervention programs, we have the Aztec firefighters that work with gang intervention, bringing young people into a culture that gives them an option other than the gang culture. We have after-school programs, we have all of this, all of these systems in place. And I'm hoping we can use it to link up with what you're bringing to the table, especially in the very dense pockets where, at times, we had roving packs of dogs out in the streets, and it was dangerous just to get to the store. Can you just comment, I know we've talked about this before, I wonder if you had any time to, to think through some of this?
I would be, I would be delighted. This is absolutely my favorite topic of, when it comes to animal services. And this is a program, as we discussed, that the umbrella name of it is TLC, or Teach Love and Compassion. And under that program is a variety of community outreach initiatives that deal with at-risk youth, that deal with our elderly, that deal with individuals who are incarcerated, and dealing with the issues of the, the link, the, the well-defined, well-documented link between animal abuse, animal neglect, and human abuse, spousal abuse, you know, elders' abuse, domestic violence. There is such a, such a well-documented connection, that if we can get to our kids at a very early age, and this is a program that we've implemented in New York, and in Maricopa County, but specifically in New York City, the, the results were so dramatic when you saw kids. And the program is designed specifically to help kids that may never have an opportunity to go to college, for, for whatever reason. And they come into the program, and it's self-select. So these are kids, and when, when we first introduced the program, there was a director of, of, of a community-based program back there, said, well, you just don't understand New York kids, they don't like animals. Well, we went to their, their fair, where all of the groups that had programs were able to recruit kids, and the kids just swarmed our table, and really demonstrated that, at their heart, kids are kids. And we're, during the selection process, we got the kids to come into the program. In the first two or three days, they would come into our shelters, or into the learning environment that we had created, and they really had the, the jaded, the walls-up approach, you know, these are kids who have learned to survive in a community that doesn't have a lot of opportunity to include them in a meaningful way. And it was very dramatic to watch these kids, over a course of two or three days, just melt into being children. And they would laugh, and they would cry, and they would smile, they would open up and talk. And the program provides mentors for these kids, who help them with their homework, and there's a literacy component, where the kids do a journal every day, they write poetry, they write essays, they do a newsletter. It, it just really and truly engages them. And because these are kids who are oftentimes victims themselves of cruelty, or abuse, or neglect, to see, and, and some of them are in foster homes, to see them have, to see them come into a shelter to work with animals who are the victims of cruelty, and abuse, and neglect, in need of foster, there's that connection, that heart connection that these kids have, where they realize, you know, my problems are my problems, but I can, I can reach out of myself and help a helpless being, help an animal. And it really teaches love and compassion on such a deep and profound level, that as a result of that program, some of the kids, when they became of age, actually became employees of animal control. So it's, it's sort of a, a training ground, where these kids are now joining the ranks of animal, animal welfare professionals by joining the program there. And we've recently expanded the program, and we want to do that here, in fact, we're working with the Department of Aging, and just started a program called Senior for Seniors, where we're getting senior companion animals matched up with our senior citizens. And, but we want to enlarge that, so that our senior citizens feel more a part of this animal welfare community, in not just helping animals, which they can do, they can foster animals in their homes, and they can do things that, you know, studies show enhance their quality of life, their, their health, their, their psychological health and well-being, but also have our seniors connect with our youth, and, and bridge the gap that so often exists, in using our centers now as community centers, intergenerational community centers, where pets are part of the community, but they're the medium by which we all seem to come together in, in agreement, in wanting to, in wanting to save lives and protect them.
Mr. Bulks, I can't express to you how profound that realization is, that epiphany. Just this past weekend, they had a National Geographic, interviews of youngsters who were involved in a notorious gang, has an international presence in our, in our country, and if not in this world, with their drug trade. And the folks that they were interviewing, the young people, they made statements like, I did not know why I was putting my life on the line for two letters, that was supposed to be a gang, my family, but really was nothing. Why I'm killing myself for the name of a street, and we don't own that land, we don't own that property, and we're dying for it. And they just didn't understand that.
Right.
Once they were doing life, and the person they were interviewing had already been killed for working with authorities. So that acknowledgement of, of care and compassion is a critical point in that person's thought process. So I'd invite you to come to the Ad-Hoc Committee on Gangs, because it's important to understand that relationship. Please come to the HCD Committee, the Housing Community Economic Development Committee, talk to us about what we can do to leverage that resource. We need to be creative, we need to approach what we have to change that mindset.
I'll be there.
And it's not just about putting children in jails and in prisons, it's about addressing their needs, so thank you for being-
Giving them hope.
Yes. Thank you very much, Mr. Reyes. Mr. Labange, and then Mr. Cardenas.
Good morning, and welcome to Los Angeles, good to see you again.
Thank you, sir.
How are you doing today?
Good, good to see you.
All righty. Now we have, how many citywide facilities, animal shelters?
We have six now, we will have seven, and ultimately eight.
Eight, and where's the eighth going?
Uh, South LA.
Well, there's one in South LA, now where's the seventh going?
Uh, you need a schedule of openings?
Yeah.
I'm sorry?
North Valley.
Northeast Valley.
Northeast Valley, okay, good. So I think it's good to have a vision of what, you know, all is going to be there, the very important facilities, and that, and the north-central serves much of my area, what is also in your district is on 11th Avenue, is a very nice, and a bright spot, you know, on that issue.
The unveiling of these shelters, or these centers is going to be spectacular for the city.
Mr. West, who came in with the program, adopt a, a pet the other day, and-
Yes.
I know some of the board of supervisors do that, I think Mr. Antonovich does that up the street, but what kind of programs do you have that, let's say, you could do with, let's say, the Los Angeles Zoo? Have you thought about anything there?
With the Los Angeles Zoo?
Right. You know, there's a lot of children come there, maybe on a Saturday, have an adoption program?
Something we tried to do in New York, and it didn't, and it may yet work, and if we could do it in Los Angeles first, all the better. But we're better to have a pet adoption center than at the LA Zoo.
Right.
I mean, here, people come to experience the wonder and the grandeur of wildlife.
Right.
And the reason we have pets, I mean, the reason pets are so important to us in our life, is because of the connection they provide us-
Right.
...in nature, you know, we, you know, from whence we came, and the, it's not practical, although some people try it, to have wild and exotic animals in our homes and in our communities, which is, which is silly and nonsensical, when we have so many domestic animals, animals that have been partners with mankind for thousands of years.
Right.
And as long as they're dying in our shelters, you know, we should be doing everything-
I know the zoo would welcome that, I know, yeah, they, yeah, so, yeah, so Dr. John Lewis and others, Denise Farret, will make arrangements, and I'll get you a tour there if you need be, and there's a relationship there.
Excellent.
Also, dog parks, I'm a great proponent of dog parks, it's a tremendous thing, do you have any opinion on dog parks when you're- you have any opinion on dog parks when you're professionally?
I absolutely love dog parks. The one, one area or weakness that I have seen in many communities is we tend to neglect to make it a requirement that all dogs be licensed. That is a huge benefit and privilege for a pet guardian or a pet owner to be able to take their pet to a public park. And I think the least we can do is require that the animal be licensed.
So, you would see, like Runyon Canyon's in the Hollywood Hill, it's probably one of the most popular parks in the city per 96 acres. It's LA Stairmaster. When it was built, it wasn't built. I think there's a law that requires that there have to be parking next to a dog park. And now the parking's in the neighborhood, and dogs are like people too. They're, they're wonderful animals. They sometimes cause problems on the fronts of people's properties. In fact, when they urinate, they could, after consistency of many, many times, it could actually destroy the fencing there. What would you say on issues related to, add like a dog park, that there would be an animal service representative there to require that people have dog licenses?
Absolutely. I think that, and I'm already talking to the general manager of the Parks Recreation Department.
Mr. Mugry.
How we can better partner on events at the parks for pet adoptions and that. But yes, I think that not only animal services representatives, but I'd like to see our park rangers also have enforcement abilities so that anytime we run into an animal in our, in our public parks, of all places, that we can issue a warning and get those animals licensed.
Right. And as far as all animals at the zoo, you support all animals at the zoo as long as they're cared for and loved? Do you have any particulars? An issue recently, last week, we talked about elephants.
Right, right.
You're a leader now of animal services for Los Angeles. Do you have a particular position on that?
With respect to that, I'm a leader with the domestic and companion animals in our community, and I'd like to restrict my comments to that at this point.
Okay. But I just, I mean, if you had a particular opinion, I'd like to know.
I know that this is a very complicated issue, and I know the very best minds in the community who are much more educated and astute with respect to elephants. I know elephants are magnificent creatures that require a great deal of care. And if, and I think it's incumbent upon us as a community to find the very best way to care for those, for those creatures, and not just the elephants, but any animals that we have deemed to keep in captivity.
Great. Thank you very much. And also, for the record, Mr. Garcetti, in my backyard lives many raccoons. Coyotes come through there at certain seasons of the years, possum, squirrel, and all the other challenges that are there. I live in the Silver Lake District in the hills.
Any skunks?
Yeah, some skunks too, yeah, Eric. There's some skunks there too. Anyway, thank you. Good luck to you, and take care of the people who work for you, who work so hard in a, in much of a thankless job. And I appreciate the focus that we're giving on them. Make sure that we do care for them in any which way. So, when they go to work in the morning or in the afternoon or the evening, they're there. And finally, work real hard with Ms. Han to finally get Reggie out of Machado Lake so we could come to the Los Angeles Zoo, the wonderful alligator. Your people have been helpful in that, too. Thank you very much, Mr. President.
Thank you very much, Mr. Labange. Our next speaker is Mr. Weston, then Mr. Smith and Mr. Cott for a second time.
Thank you, Mr. President, members. And basically, I'd just rise to welcome you to this great city and to say how excited I am about working with you in the future. And Mr. Labange is right where it relates to the pet adoption program that we in the city of Los Angeles kicked off last Friday. It is patterned after a pet adoption program that has been going on in the county of Los Angeles for almost a dozen years, very successful. Every pet that has been on display has been adopted. Two-thirds of those pets have been adopted by county employees. So, I am optimistic that here in the city, that over two-thirds of our pets will be adopted by city employees. And unfortunately, you were unable to be with us.
Please forgive me.
Last week. And of course, you're forgiven. But before I left the podium, the, as we called the dog Snoop, it didn't have a name. It was adopted before I got from the podium to the horseshoe. But what I wanted to say is that this program is personally, to me, a favorite program and a positive program. At this juncture, we do it on a bimonthly basis. I hope to, within a short period of time, do it on a once-a-week basis, once I can get this designated as a public servant, a public service. Would you have, is that too difficult for, on a weekly basis, for your people to?
We would be delighted. We had such a program in Maricopa County and had similar success. 100% of the animals we brought were typically adopted before the meeting was over. And since our conversation, and I think perhaps you suggested this, that during our conversation, is the possibility of bringing a different, an animal from each district each week, a district, a different district, just to highlight the efforts that our staff are making in every district. And it gives every council member an opportunity to just really express their support to our pet adoption efforts, our pet rescue efforts.
Well, that is my goal with the six shelters that we have now, to bring a dog from a different shelter and ask the councilperson from that region to stand with me as we try to hawk these great companion animals. One, one thing that I did want to, to ask, last week, the telephone number that was flashed on Channel 35 was the telephone number to the specific shelter where the dog was. I do think it would be better for us to have, you know, the same phone number every time, one, you know, 1-800 number or a centralized number so people could call that one number.
This is actually part of the strategic plan that we're putting together and also is a budget issue that we're hoping to incorporate. And that's the development of a very sophisticated call center where one number, and we were also hoping that we can work with, with the city's 311 program in concert. But we think that we need to have in Los Angeles because there are so many animal welfare issues. And so many of the calls that we get in our office now are dropped or not, people hang up because it takes so long because we don't have enough staffing to answer and that. But if we, and we're looking to a foundation to help offset some of the costs of this. But because there's such, you know, everything from coyotes to skunks to raccoons to dogs to cats to alligators, and, you know, there's, there's so many issues, I think, that people's heads would spin if they realized just how dive-first animal services is in this community. And if we had a one-stop shop where somebody had a very easy-to-remember phone number that they could contact experts in the field who could either directly respond to their concern or refer them to the appropriate organization, I think that would be priceless. And it would be such an extraordinary community service to every resident, to every animal-loving resident, as well as the residents who are just concerned about the nuisances that some animals pose.
I got it. And I will look to you. I mean, I know without a shadow of a doubt, the, the animals that we will bring before the council will be adopted. But I'm going to need to work with you to creatively come up with a way to let the rest of Los Angelinos know that we have hundreds.
Yes.
Hundreds of beautiful animals that are just waiting for a home. So, I just need your guidance into how we can creatively incorporate that as we do our pet adoption program. And lastly, this, this Friday, we're going to do one more pet adoption. And this time, I want to do two animals. So, I'm putting you on alert and giving you two days to find me two dogs worthy of adoption.
Thank you, sir. Very much.
Thank you, and welcome.
Thank you. And with respect to your, your last comment of trying to get the word out, one new feature that I want everybody in Los Angeles to be aware of is, it's going to be on the front page of our website, and it's going to be our Matchmaker program. So, if people are looking for a specific breed or a specific type of dog or cat or even rabbit, they can place, fill out a form. And every time an animal that matches what they're looking for comes in, they will automatically be notified by email that that animal is in. Show them a picture of the animal, a description of the animal, and tell them what center it's in.
Wonderful, wonderful.
Thank you. Mr. Smith?
Thank you, Mr. President. I've heard a great discussion today, and I enjoyed a meeting with Mr. Boakes the other day, and I'm very supportive. I was very pleased with what I heard from you, your vision, your ideas, making this a better department. I understand, Mr. President, we have two speakers that want to speak, and therefore I move a five-minute public hearing.
Okay. So, no objection to that? We'll first go then to Van Nuys. If Dr. Charlotte Laws is there, you can stay there, Mr. Boakes. At a remote facility in Van Nuys, we'll try to hook up and see if she's there. Wait, you came on for a second and hold on one second, Dr. Laws. Okay, go ahead. Welcome.
Hello, council members. I am Dr. Charlotte Laws, member of the Greater Valley Glen Council and president of the Directors of Animal Welfare Program, also known as the DAW program. The DAWs are appointed by neighborhood councils to assist stakeholders with animal-related issues. We currently have 35 DAWs and hope to have 100% council participation in the near future. The DAWs have voted to support Mayor Vierregosa's appointment of Mr. Ed Boakes as the permanent general manager for animal services. We are pleased with his innovative ideas and prospective programs for propelling the city to no-kill. We are pleased that he has animal experience. We are pleased that he has reached out to the entire humane community. I want to thank you in advance for approving Mr. Boakes, and I want to personally thank Mayor Vierregosa for listening to the rescue groups and others who devote so many hours to helping those without a voice, the animals. I believe the city is on the road to improving shelter conditions, saving animal lives, and becoming recognized as a nationwide leader in animal welfare. In conclusion, the Directors of Animal Welfare are here to serve Los Angeles. Please feel free to call upon us anytime for assistance. There are DAWs in every district. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Dr. Laws. We appreciate your commentaries from out from Van Nuys and our remote facility. Our next public speaker is here, Ms. Phyllis Doughty.
Good morning, council members. Councilman Weston, I'll have to tell you, the last time we tried the dog adoptions in the council, Joel Wax ended up having to change his suit each time, and that's why they stopped it. Mr. Boakes will do better. Mr. Boakes obviously is going to have to form a lot of alliances, and some will be with many of the people that have seriously threatened and endangered the lives of the people who work for the city, for the animal shelters and in various capacities. I think it would behoove him to go look back on websites and see some of these names. That doesn't mean that some of these people cannot make a contribution and should not be listened to or their ideas considered. But at the same time, we have to understand what an impact that is going to have upon the employees and their trust and their confidence. And we need to assure them that they are going to be safe, even with people close to Mr. Boakes who have previously attacked them. And I hope that will be very, very much in your minds and that they can come to you with their concerns as they will come to him, I'm sure. Some of them tried to stay and were not able to stay that long today, and they would like to have spoken. The unfortunate thing about Mr. Boakes having been hired to become a no-kill, to bring this to a no-kill city, is that no-kill is a myth. No-kill just means that you don't count the number of unadoptable animals that you kill. It also tends to relieve responsibility for the public, that they can just drop off any number of animals, breed any number of animals, and nothing will be killed. So, as Mr. Boakes works with this, I hope that some of the ideas that are being proposed, such as no animal limits, which means that houses and yards can be filled with animals to the detriment of the community, that animals will be given away free or at all waived fees, which is also very dangerous to the safety of everyone. And lastly, that pack animals will be left in the streets because if you don't bring the animals into the shelter, there's no risk of having to kill them. And we do not want that to be the way that no-kill is achieved. We want it to be in a safe method. The only thing I'm concerned, and I love Mr. Boakes, I think he's wonderful, and I think he has the experience we need, I don't hear him emphasizing law enforcement. And unfortunately, in this city, it isn't until the public finds out that the laws are going to be enforced that we bring about the changes that we need. So, I'm hoping that he will emphasize that and that he will understand that our problems and our issues are different in this city and that also he will take advantage of the sensible and realistic approach that you all have and the knowledge that you have. And when he finds he needs to reassess and make new plans, that he will come and talk to you about it and realize that you're going to be very open to that.
Thank you very much. Next, sorry, that closes the public comment. And next, Mr. Labange, to be followed by Mr. Cott.
I had one thing. Griffith Park, 4,212 acres, 56 miles of bridle trails and horses. I forgot to mention the horses, and I'm going to get kicked by one of them if I didn't mention them. And many of them live throughout, along the river. Also, great horse population in the northwest San Fernando Valley. And do you ride at all?
On occasion.
On occasion. There's a great ride from Sunset Stables over top down through the river. But what's your feelings about horses? Because you're responsible about horses.
I love horses.
You love horses? I mean, what do you see their future? You know, I mean, how do you, I mean, this is what I want to put in your mind.
Right.
There's a whole movement for revitalizing the river. There's a Rim of the Valley program. There's trails. They live in neighborhoods. I guess, I know we're talking about dogs and cats.
Are you asking if horses are appropriated in our public parks?
Well, yeah, at some spots they are. No, I just wanted to know how you feel. I mean, I don't know how many horses. What's the private, I know they got the mountain unit in Central Park in New York.
Well, this is something, this is an issue I would certainly want to, want to study as you might have heard, this is a huge controversial issue in New York as well, in Central Park with carriage horses and things of that sort.
Right.
But as I understand it, here, these are, these are.
Riders, yeah.
Just riding horses.
Right, yeah.
Right. I think to the, to the degree that it can be regulated and it's safe and provides a quality of life enhancement to the residents of our community, I think that it's a valuable service that we can provide. But to answer your question, I think that I would like more time to study the issue.
Oh, that's what I want you to do, study it and learn about it. It's absolutely amazing. Up in West Los Angeles, Manaville Canyon and other parts, there are horse stables. And it's at a park, Will Rogers Park, which is state-run park. There's a lot of horses, and they deserve a place too as a, in the whole greater mix of things.
Right.
And this. And then some of our horses live in our border cities and then cross into Los Angeles and use the parks or whatever. And it's a positive. I'm just reminding you about the horses too as you look at it.
Okay.
Welcome to Los Angeles, and I hope you have a tremendous experience for you and your family here.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much, Mr. Labange. Mr. Cott?
Thank you, President Garcetti. I just have one, one other issue I'd like to make you aware of. You're aware of what happened with Hurricane Katrina. We actually have brought many of their animals over here to Los Angeles, and they're now with caring, loving families. Some of our, some of them are still being placed as we speak and being nurtured and cared for. But here, within the city of Los Angeles, we have earthquakes. And there are other disasters that may occur, other threats upon our city that may happen. So, my question to you is, two questions. One, has the department created disaster rescue operation plan for the city? Obviously, your department would be core there. And in addition to that, if you have or haven't within the department, I'm introducing a motion that will actually have the department report back on that because I think that it's important that we do have that. I think in times of disaster, people look at priorities, and we should not give up on our animals as a priority. And we need to have something in place. I think it's something that can be done. It's something that has been done in other cities. And I'd like to know what you're going to do about that. And within your report, it's my understanding today that there is actually someone who's, has that responsibility within the department. But that position has either been vacant on and off. So, I'd like that, you know, you to clarify that as well, if not at this time, into the future.
I'd be happy to just comment. And now, the position is filled. And I was delighted to find it when I came to Los Angeles, that not only is it filled, but it's occupied by a very competent individual who has been working very closely with the Office of Emergency Management in developing a two-pronged disaster relief program for our pets. As I'm sure every member of the council here is aware that there is federal legislation moving its way through that will require pets to be included in any evacuation plan in the future. That was not a requirement in New Orleans, which is why there is so much grief in that community today. So, we are looking at a plan that, twofold. One, how can our centers best be used as a place to bring animals to in the event of a disaster? And the second prong is, in depending on the disaster, sometimes we may need to evacuate our centers. Where do we take the animals and what do we do? So, we're addressing both contingencies. How can our centers serve the community when there's a disaster in finding their lost pets? What happened in New Orleans was, was something of a disaster, a disaster upon a disaster in that animal control organizations were ill-equipped or prepared to find lost pets and return them to their owners. And consequently, what happened is rescue groups from all over the country swooped in, took the animals out of the community as a fundraising mechanism. Oftentimes, you know, not all of them, but oftentimes, but these animals have been used now to raise funds all over the country. And but my heart, or my concern is that the people in that community will never be able to find their animals now because they people in that community will never be able to find their animals now, because they’ve been virtually kidnapped. So what we want in our community is a program so that in the event of a disaster and people are separated from their pets, they’ll be able to find them, and we’ll be able to have, if, providing the services are available, pictures of the animals on our websites, available in our shelters, and doing everything we can to reunite pets with their owners. And then, again, the second prong is when we have to evacuate our shelters, being sure that we have safe havens, that we can effectively, you know, there have been cases across the country where, well, in New Orleans, for instance, there was a shelter where every animal drowned, because nobody thought to get the animals out of the shelter. We want to make sure that in an impending disaster like that, we want to get our animals to a safe place. So all of that is being addressed, and I’d be delighted to report on it to you, sir.
Good, we look forward to that. We certainly wouldn’t want our pets to be abandoned. We certainly wouldn’t want them to be taken advantage of, as you just described. So please, you know, understand that we’re going to be looking forward to that very soon, because you never know when a disaster strikes. So hopefully, in the next 30 days, you’ll be able to report to this council, specifically the Public Safety Committee, on the disaster preparedness plan we have for animals within the city of Los Angeles. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, colleagues, for a very vigorous and interesting discussion, seeing no other folks wishing to be heard. If we can please open the roll, Mr. Bokes’ nomination. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
Congratulations, Mr. Bokes. Again, welcome aboard permanently. Appreciate it. All right. If we can now continue with public comment, which we suspended before due to the inability of some folks to come in, why don’t we do that? If I can ask Mr. Mort Allen to come forward first?
Good morning, Mort Allen. Unfortunately, I was unable to be here yesterday, because we had the International Council, a shopping centers convention here in downtown LA, but I had something which I was unable to bring yesterday, which was in the paper this morning. So Janice, I have your valentine here. Forget it. All right. And not to be left out, I also have one for Wendy and for Janice, for Jan.
Playing all the sides, huh?
Okay. Let me just tell you real quickly, this has been a long wait and a very obnoxious crowd out in the hallway, but yesterday, we had a convention on, about the downtown redevelopment. There were 1,500 people in the shopping center industry at the convention center. Our mayor spoke, Jan Perry spoke, it was wonderful, and I had the opportunity to speak, and I mentioned something that I think was of interest of all of you, it’s term limits. So let me just tell you that we talked about how downtown has been so rebuilt because of our new city council and how wonderful it is and the projects that everybody has had in each of the areas, and unfortunately, we’re going to lose this whole city council in three years, and we’re going to be back to go again. So Eric, we, Eric, Eric, Eric. We would like to see you set up an ad hoc committee to see what we can do about, on a one-time basis, go to the voters and ask that the existing council be allowed another four years, because they’ve turned around the city, whereas we used to have a janitor and all kinds of people that had been here for 25 years. We have a group that’s like no other group in the country. We have Wendy that came from the White House. We have two presidents and Rhodes Scholars, Clinton and Garcetti. We have a television commentator. We have people, MIT graduate, we have such great people in each area. If you take Hollywood, if you take what Wendy’s done to the Valley and all this, and these people need, we can’t just let these people go. So if we could figure out a way to get it on the ballot without having to spend a half million dollars for signatures, we need to get working on this, because the city will be in a disaster if all these people leave in two years and these projects are half-done.
Thank you, Ms. Allen. We appreciate your comments very much. Nader Tashakor, is Nader here? Okay. Maria Gonzalez, Roberto Armazias, Josefina Medina, Maria Avina, Guadalupe Felix, Candido Santana, Eliseo Lopez, Federico Vargas, Eliseo Avina, Aurelio Gonzalez, from South Central Farmers. Bienvenidos, welcome.
Buenos dias, mi nombre es Candido Santana. Nosotros venimos representando los campesinos del Sur Central Farmer que está en la 41 y la Alameda. Solo queremos venir a pedirles que, a todos los concejales, que nos dejen seguir trabajando la tierra.
Good morning, my name is Candido Santana. We’re here representing the farmers located at 41st and Alameda in South Central. We’re here just to ask for your assistance, all of you council people, to please continue supporting us, so that we can continue cultivating that land. Thank you.
Good morning, my name is Celeste Velaquera, I’m a South Central Farmer, Mr. Rosendale. We are happy that you supported the people living at the Lincoln Place. You stood up for them even when the developer was trying to victim. We are very courageous, we, we wish the South Central Farmers could have a supporter like you in the city council instead of, instead our city council hides and ignores us. Also, they ignored the fact that it was wrong to sell the farm that was owned by the city to a developer without telling anybody. How can anyone say that it was fair? Where was a Latino city official when this happened? We don’t see anyone standing for, standing up for what is right for the people, childrens and families. Mr. Reyes, can you say something? Mr. Rosendale, Mr. Wee, Mr. Weezer, Mr. Weston, we trust that you can bring justice by bringing this very important issue to the city’s attention. Please tell the council to negotiate and sell of the land at 41st and Alameda at the same price that the developer, Ross Harris, paid for it. Please don’t, please do what is right. Thank you.
Thank you. Very good job. Anybody else?
Buenos dias.
Buenos dias.
Mi nombre es Josefina Medina. Otra vez venimos a pedir por nuestro jardín, nuestro espacio verde en 41 y Alameda.
Hi, my name is Josefina Medina. We’re once here again, asking for your support for the garden, for the green space that’s located on 41st and Alameda.
Señores, los nuevos concejales esta vez no saben cómo ha sido este proceso de que...
Gentlemen, perhaps the new council people do not know or have, have no knowledge of how this, of what has taken place in this process?
De que nos quieren mover de ahí. Solo les pido, piensen que 14 años se dicen fácil.
Of the fact that they want us to leave that place, please think about it. 14 years, you can say that very easily, but in reality?
En la realidad, nosotros los campesinos le hemos dado vida a ese lugar cuando ese lugar era un basurero.
As the farmers have given life to that place, where in the past, that place used to be a dumping ground for trash.
Y nosotros no les costamos dinero a la ciudad porque nosotros somos autosuficientes con nuestras propias donaciones.
We’re, we’re not costing any money to the city, because we’re self-sufficient as far as our own donations.
Al contrario, creo que ahora la ciudad nos está presionando más.
To the contrary, right now, I think that the city is pressuring us more.
La razón que nos están mandando a ponernos tickets cada ocho días.
The reason I say that is because every week, they’re sending someone to give us a ticket.
Cuando esto no pasaba en diez años atrás.
When this hadn’t happened 10 years ago.
Gracias.
Gracias.
Good morning, my name is Martina Lira, and I have about, I have five kids, and all of my kids, when we go to the garden, they get so happy. So please, council members, I’m just, we want to keep the garden and help us out with that. We, we invite you to come and see our garden, how beautiful it looks, it is, it is so beautiful. Only if you come and, and see our garden, you’re going to fall in love with it, just like the way I did. I barely got the garden like maybe six, I’m sorry, I barely became a member of the garden about maybe six months ago, and it’s, I just fell in love with it. When you see those beautiful things growing, the beautiful vegetables, we invite you just to come and see how beautiful it looks, all green, it’s, it’s just beautiful. Then I know, once you guys see, once you, you council members see our garden, you’re going to fall in love with it, just the way I did. Thank you. Help us out to keep, keep our garden, save our garden. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Muchas gracias. Next, we have Alberto Juárez of EAA. Alberto Juárez, no. Joanne Jack, Jackson?
It’s not here.
Okay.
It’s not here.
Okay, no problem. Joanne Jackson, here, going once, twice. J.C. Williams, is J.C. Williams here? Donna Doherty, our next speaker.
Good morning, Mr. President and fellow members of the city council. I thank you for giving me this time. Of course, I’m here, I asked why they had all the police cars outside, I didn’t realize everybody was here, and my other friends in City Hall told me they had come to take me away, so you wouldn’t be bothered with me. I’m here, of course, to talk about Griffith Observatory and the planned lack of access at the front entrance. We’ve been paying two architectural firms for over 11 years, and they have made an effort to not make any alternative designs for the front entrance. We should have universal design. It is the coming design, and it simply means that we could keep the front steps there, but we can put ramps in, what they call them, sloping walkways from the east and the west. There’s no reason why we have to have those steps, you can’t even see them from the front. In any case, we’ve been over that, I’m asking you, please, I am begging you, to get this on the full city council. This cannot happen to us. It’s a disgrace to this city to open and to have a sign on the middle of the lawn that says, “If you are disabled, you go around to the backside of the building in one door,” and they say they’re in compliance, and they are not in compliance with the ADA codes. They are not. I do want to congratulate the LA Times on the great article that came out on Sunday. If you haven’t seen it, everybody in this city ought to go to their library and take a look at it. It’s in the calendar section, three pages. Also, New York Times on Sunday, front page, and page 20 and 21, talking about the incredible disaster to the human bodies of our soldiers that are out there fighting for us right now in Iraq, and we have the biggest VA in the United States right here. Could we not do this for them? Please.
Thank you, Ms. Doherty.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Kristin Ochoa is our next speaker. Kristin Ochoa here. Alexia Bruzan, Alexia here. And last, but certainly not least, Mr. Melrose, Larry Green.
Good morning, good morning, everybody. Sorry, I, I ran down here, it’s a very busy day for me, and I only have two minutes, so let me move quickly. First, about the media and the bias of the media in this country. We talked about the animals before. My cat is Robin Quivers. Maybe black lady will meet Robin Quivers someday, and although I have lots and lots of lady friends, the only one that sleeps in my bed is Robin Quivers, my lovely cat. So I will definitely be here Friday. I love my cat. No girl ever loved me like my cat. By the way, I am also single. If we can get together, Janice. That’s right, we, we could talk about the mayors that we know, all right? We both know mayors very well, okay? And unfortunately, actually, you might be mayor someday, so I better be very nice to you. Stranger things have happened, folks. Look at our governor. Now...
You’ve crossed Ms. Hahn’s face to match her outfit today.
Thank you, thank you. Now, I only have a minute left. I want to speak about the bias in the media, the LA Times and the New York Times, the op-ed page we could use to line the cages in all the animal centers. I’m sure the dogs and cats will complain. The article in today’s Times, “He Loves the Smell of Gunpowder, Is a Disgrace.” Accidents happen, any one of you can be involved in an accident in your SUV on the way to driving. The Vice President was involved in an awful accident. My prayers go out to Mr. Whittington and his family, and yes, my prayers go out to Vice President Cheney. But the media, they stop at nothing. Al Franken, Michael Moore, Maureen Dowd, shameless, disgraceful. I still have 18 seconds. The lights on Melrose and Mansfield, no left turn at 4:00. Come there to California Chicken, Tom Labange. Beverly and Rosewood, no right turn, 1:05. Every day, they violate the law. I’m there every day. Thank you, my time’s up.
Thank you. Ms. Perry? I’m sorry, Ms. Perry? Did you want to? Ms. Perry, did you want to say something? I’m sorry, I just noticed you. Okay. All right. Thank you very much. That closes our always colorful public comment, and we can return to the agenda. We did have item number five, in which there was a speaker card. Is that person still here? Because if so, we will reconsider that. I know it was tough for folks to get in. Yeah, Mr. Reyes?
Thank Council President, I wanted to move 25, 26 forthwith.
Okay.
As well as number 15.
Okay, 15, 25, 26. Is that speaker still here for number five, Martin Roy Mervell? If not, that has been passed, and we certainly, and I know that was for the proposal, which is how it went, so we’ll enter that into the record. Item 51, we’ve had a request from the city attorney’s office to continue that till Tuesday. Is there any objection, colleagues, to that continuation? Okay. If not, so ordered, and I believe that finishes our agenda. Is that correct, Mr. Clerk?
Council has motions for posting a referral.
Has are posted and referred.
There are excuses on the desk. Councilmember LeBons requests to be excused Friday, February 24th, for city business. That meets council policy.
Mr. LeBons is excused.
And Councilmember Hahn requests to be excused Friday, February 24th, to leave at 10:45 for city business and the entire meeting of March 17th for personal business. A motion is required.
Okay. Mr. Padilla moves, Ms. Gruel seconds. Unanimous vote, if there’s no objection, so ordered, and she’s excused for both.
That clears the desk.
Okay. Announcements, colleagues? Any announcements? Mr. Parks?
I would just like to see if Janice Hahn would like to respond. Was that a yes?
Well, she was excused for personal business, I didn’t want to make the connection.
I mean, about the proposal that we heard earlier, was that a yes?
She’s had quite a busy day. Let’s give her a little time to think about that.
I just, I just wondered, let me...
Mr. Parks?
Give a couple of announcements. First of all, the Crenshaw High School parent meeting went February 23rd, 2:00 p.m. to 3:00, 15:00 p.m. at Crenshaw at 5010 11th Avenue. Primary subject will be dealing with Crenshaw High School’s absentee rate. Also, there is a African-American, Korean-American Community Relationship Forum at the California African-American Museum, 600 State Drive in Exposition Park, February 16th at 6:00 p.m. The keynote speakers will be Bishop Charles Blake, West Angeles Church, and Reverend Dr. Lim from the Oriental Mission Church, and one of the special guests there will be the mayor of the city, Antonio Vieragosa. Also, the Los Angeles is coming up on us, for all of the residents of the city be aware of, March 19th is the LA Marathon. Certainly important to everyone to get information as to the route, so they can get where they’re going. The last item I have is, the CD8 will be putting on a disaster preparedness training on March 13th, a Monday, at the Constituent Center, 8475 South Vermont. The time is 7:00 p.m. to 9:00. The phone number for that location is 323-293-9467.
Thank you. Mr. Rosendale?
Yes, for those constituents of mine in Westchester, tonight, again, at 7:00, is a public safety meeting. There’s been an uptick in crime in Westchester, so at 7:00 tonight, if you’re impacted in that area, the police will be there with some good insight as to what we need to do to protect ourselves, and that’s in our Westchester office at the corner of Manchester and Lincoln, tonight at 7:00. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Reyes.
Thank Council President, I just wanted to rise and...
I just wanted to rise and take a moment to thank the Northeast Democratic Club, along with Congressman Beceta. We planted and we have the first living memorial to Congressman Ed Roybal. We planted the tree last Friday at Ramona Hall on Figaro and Highland Park. And it was great to see our Wreck-It Parks Department manager there, along with his great staff, Mr. Mariscal, and essentially give tribute to a legend that's done so much for so many people here in Los Angeles and the region as a council member, as a supervisor, and as a congressman.
Thank you very much. Mr. Padilla?
Want to announce for folks watching at home that the Mission Area Police Station is having their monthly CPAD meeting tonight, starting at 6:30 at the police station, Sepulveda, near Mission Boulevard.
Thank you. Other announcements, colleagues? I know the Youth Think Art Exhibition, which is co-sponsored by our City Attorney's Office and the Zimmer Children's Museum, is opening up here in City Hall on the bridge between City Hall and City Hall East this evening. I know there's a reception for that. So welcome folks to City Hall for that. Any other announcements? If not, if I could ask everybody, please rise for adjourned motions. Adjourned motions, colleagues. Mr. Weezer?
In memory of Edward Chicalion, who was born in 1926 in Shanghai, China. Edward received a Bachelor of Arts degree from San Francisco State and continued graduate studies in labor economics at UC Berkeley. In 1964, Edward began working for the State of California's Division of Labor Standards Enforcement. During this time, Edward was able to help hundreds of thousands of California workers with labor issues. After serving the state for more than 40 years, Edward was hired by the International Ladies Garment Workers Union in 1990 as an organizer. In addition to working in California, Ed participated in labor campaigns in Texas, Wisconsin, and other states, where he joined in on hunger strikes. His expertise on wage law played a critical role in the historic gas campaign. In 1999, he returned to the Division of Labor Standards Enforcement for a year and initiated a statewide investigation of violations against janitors. Soon after, Ed joined the new janitorial watch organization called the Maintenance Cooperation Trust Fund, which was established by SUAU Loco 1877. His work led to a historic settlement in the amount of $22.4 million in unpaid wages for more than 2,000 janitors. And thanks to his leadership, the MCTF has become a national authority on labor law enforcement and workplace protections. Ed passed away on February 6, 2006, at 7:20 p.m. He is survived by his wife Jacqueline, daughter Maureen, son Leon, and two grandchildren, Alexis and Philip.
Thank you very much. Mr. Parks?
I'd like to ask this to adjourn in memory of Beryl Ventress Smith, a grade school classmate of mine from St. Patrick's Grade School at 33rd and Central. Beryl recently succumbed to over a year-long bout with leukemia and cancer. Many of you have met her husband Chuck Smith, who was a Vice President, Regional Director of SBC, Pac-Bell, and now AT&amp;T. He's now the president of the Reston Region. We'll have more information Friday, but funeral service will be Monday at St. Bernard Datsin. We'll have the time and date. But Beryl and I went through seven years of St. Patrick's. She was fortunate enough to graduate from St. Patrick's. I had to move to Holy Spirit and spent my last year there, most of it on detention. But we had an opportunity to know her and her family. Chuck Smith and I went to high school together, and his father was one that really was instrumental in getting me back to school, because he was in construction business, and he often took me out on summer vacation and taught me such things as hard carrying, lading, and plastering, which made it clear I was going back to school because of the hard work that he did on a day-to-day basis. But Beryl will be missed. She's the mother of two wonderful children. One is a student, recently graduated from USC. And also, her son is a doctor of computer science at MIT.
Yeah, I think Ms. Perry and Mr. Padilla. Why don't you all members on that one? Thank you, Mr. Rosendale.
Yes, I'm sad to say that we've lost an American Muslim leader, a patriarch of the Muslim community. I went to a wake last night, and there were hundreds of people at the wake. His name was Armod Adeyem. He was a very generous and humble man. He would not even share his good works with his family. He donated the land and buildings for a battered women's shelter. He heavily supported the New Horizons School System and donated the land for the West L.A. Elementary School and money to construct its buildings. When Bosnian refugees started coming to Southern California, he gave them jobs, he housed them, and paid for their children's education. He supported the arts. He donated to the L.A. County Museum of Arts, the Pacific Asian Museum, had poetry contests to promote poetry from his home country. He built orphanages and schools in Pakistan. He was born July 13, 1927, in India, in Batra, India. Then, he came to the United States in 1976. He had his wife, Amina, six children, 17 grandchildren, and 11 great-grandchildren. He was quite a leader and will be a tremendous loss to all of us. May he rest in peace.
Thank you. Any other adjourned motions, colleagues? Seeing that, Mr. Clerk, please call the roll. Thank you very much. This meeting of the Los Angeles City Council is adjourned.